I'm going to call to order the August ninth Planning Commission meeting and ask Justin Polley to do this, read us off in the Fledge of Allegiance. Flag is at the front of the room there?
Fledge of Allegiance. To be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to roll call, can we have a roll call please?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Alright, thank you. Which moves us to public comments, is there anybody here wishing to speak?
No.
No comments. Moves us to public hearings, agenda item number two.
I'm looking for minutes.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I need to go back. Oh, minutes.
Is it?
Is it approved as written?
Motion?
Oh, second.
Is this a voice vote?
Yes.
Okay, and so I can start on the motion card.
Aye.
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 Okay.
That passes, thank for the reminder. Which now moves us to public hearings, again, item number two. She is. Tenant parcel map and minor conditional use permit CU, so it's tenant parcel map twenty twenty-one dash one oh seven and minor conditional use permit CUP twenty-one dash zero zero two, I'm zero 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 seven M to convert an attached duplex to condominiums on a single lot at thirty-four six twenty-one via Catalina. We have a staff report.
Yes Chair Nelson, Assistant Planner Justin Polley has been managing this project and will give the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair Nelson, Commissioners. Hello everyone, I'm Justin Polley and I'll be presenting tenant parcel map two thousand twenty-one dash one oh seven, minor conditional use permit twenty-one zero 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 seven on behalf of planning staff. Here we can see the vicinity map and the aerial image of the subject property, this is located in Capistrano Beach, it is located outside of the coastal overlay zone and the zoning designation is that of residential duplex fourteen. Subject site consists of an in-construction duplex attached and is surrounded by both single-family and multifamily dwelling units. Here are just some site photos and surrounding site photos, in the bottom left you can see the current view of what the construction looks like. Almost completed at this point, looking up to the top left, this is the adjacent property to the west or if you're facing the front of the subject property to the right, a single-family residence. Over to the top right, you have the subject property located in the east and left if you're facing the front, which is also a single-family residence. And then the last picture to the bottom right is just looking out from the front of the property at the adjacent property to the north or across the street, which is another single-family residence. It's important to note there's a multi-family structure just located just behind the subject property. This is the proposed tenant parcel map. Basically, the duplex was entitled under two entitlements, one was a minor site development permit, that was minor site development permit seventeen dash zero zero four nine minor. That was required for roof decks, each unit has a roof deck, also the measurement of building height was measured from thirty inches of fill to achieve positive drainage to the front of via Catalina. And there's also, there were existing overheight walls on the site as well. There's also a conditional use permit that was approved, CUP seventeen dash zero zero one eight, and that was required for the tandem parking, you can see if you're looking at the tenant parcel map here, the lower unit is unit A and that contains a tandem parking situation, one covered enclosed parking stall in a garage and then one off-street uncovered and then a two-car garage for unit B. Just some allegations of the front of the project site, again showing site development permit seventeen zero zero four nine. These two entitlements, again, were required for the approval of the duplex originally, however, these entitlements did not include any subdivision actions. Therefore, the owner wishes to subdivide the parcels in order to sell the units separately from one another as they would be condominiums. Staff recommend approval of tenant parcel map two thousand twenty-one dash one oh seven and minor conditional use permit twenty-one dash zero 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 seven, according to the findings and conditions included in the draft resolution. And that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Polley, questions from the commission? Any questions?
Just one question. On the, this page four at the bottom, it said the conditions should either of the units be occupied prior to the recording of the final parcel map, you should notice and excuse of initial purchase rights for tenants of the units are provided in accordance with the local subdivision map. Were there tenants and residents before the construction?
No, they've never been occupied before.
Okay.
So it's in construction at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a policy question, when people come in for condos or attached property, are we asking them to go through the map back then so that you can kind of consolidate all this or is it just whatever the applicant brings in is what we go with?
So for the, for parcel maps like this, for the conversion, they are, they do have to go through the tentative process per our local ordinance, in some jurisdictions they may not have to, they could go direct to the final map, but we do require that here. So when they come in, we like to ask them questions about like, you know, what's the, how's it going to be subdivided, who's going to be responsible for maintenance, is there common areas, private areas, et cetera, et cetera. We can't require that as part of the approval, we can't require that they submit a condo plan, but as is in the conditions, we do ask that they provide that so to make sure that it's complying with any local ordinance on this specific property, we've got the tandem parking arrangements, want to make sure it stays intact, it's not impacted by any CCNRs or the condo plan. So, once they have that in, we'll look at it and then the final map will be approved by the city clerk and then reported at the county.
Yeah, I just worry that.
Yeah.
We're duplicating staff work.
Well.
We don't necessarily, don't necessarily need to.
Right. Those are the protocols right now, but yes, so.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to open the public hearing, do you have anybody wishing to speak tonight?
No Chair Nelson.
Okay, we close the public hearing and go back to the commission for discussion. We'll start to my right, do you have any?
So, did I understand that they will have the CCNRs in before approval?
Before recordation of the final map, correct?
That's, that's my question. And just for the record, I'm smiling.
I don't have the comments.
No, I'm fine with it as well.
A motion or?
Since we approved this previously as a, as a prior project, I think it's, hasn't changed and I completely support it, so I make a motion that we approve. Approve tenant parcel map TPM two zero two one one oh seven and minor conditional use permit CUP two one zero 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 seven M to convert an attached duplex dwelling to condominiums on a single lot at three four six two one via Catalina.
One second.
And a second, alright, bring it back for a voice vote, we'll start with Commissioner Gabbard.
Aye.
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 Alright, and Darius, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Which moves us on to old business, right?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, and old business is STRs, I don't know if you have any announcements, but I certainly do.
There will be a stakeholder meeting the week of August sixteenth and at your discretion, whatever update you want to get to the rest of the committee.
Yeah, so probably just more detail, so we have stakeholder meeting scheduled next week, Monday through Thursday, four to five P.M. We're meeting on Monday with property management and management companies, Tuesdays with permit holders, Wednesday is with STR neighbors, and Thursday is community groups. And I look forward to reporting back to the commission what we hear and working with Vice Chair Donor on those as well. And that's all I have on that, which moves us to new business. And?
Yeah, just a quick update, Prado West mixed-use project, as I'm sure all the commercials Commissioners can see in downtown, is well on its way to wrapping up, we're getting there. The Rain Tree Partners, Jason Chek here, wanted to provide an overview of the Art in Public Places program for the proposed project in advance of it moving forward towards ultimate decision by the Planning Commission who would take the final action. So he presented some stuff here today, there's some particulars that we highlighted in the report about the Art in Public Places program, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Jason and let him run through his presentation.
Yeah, it just doesn't move very far.
Ah, okay. Well, thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight and for taking the time, Commissioners, appreciate it. And I wanted to just take some time after talking with Brenda to explain more about this Art in Public Places fee and what our proposal is for using this fee for art on our project. The, given the size of the project and I think other projects coming through the pipeline, we thought it would be a good idea to just get some feedback as to what we're proposing, specifically a rotating art component that I think would be a pretty interesting opportunity to showcase multiple artists for this fee rather than just a single artist and hopefully utilize the sale of that art to benefit the program ongoing into the future or to benefit an agency, a local agency of some kind. So with that, this screen is not what I'm seeing here, so. It's there. Oh, it's moving, but it's not showing up here, okay, that's fine, I can just look at it. Okay, great. So, Art in Public Places, we, and any project in the town center is required to contribute a fee which is scaled to the size and cost of the project itself and the permits associated with it, so our fee is roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think we're working on the exact calculation for that fee and need to confirm that with Kirth, but it's roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be applied to either the fee to the city or used by us to contribute to a public art component at the project. So where we are today is simply an informational presentation to try and get some feedback and help us steer the direction of where we want to go with this fee contribution. We love to do an art piece that's at our project, potentially on our project, but that's what, that's the feedback we wanted to receive. We'll be coming back on the twenty-third with a formal application based on the feedback from any of the Commissioners or the public at this meeting, which will be submitted beforehand and you'll have the time to review it and then make a decision as to whether or not, you know, the art that we're proposing complies with code and what we're required to do. So, one of the things that we have involved in this project where the red dot in the central courtyard is, we have a accessible public courtyard. Where you see those dotted red lines along Amber Lantern, but specifically the, in the building on the left where you see the red dotted lines are representation of where we can put public art inside a public corridor. And the concept here that we want to get some feedback on is the idea of having a rotating art piece that would be solicited and coordinated by us to solicit local artists to come and present an art piece that would be showcased at our project for a period of time and then potentially auctioned off with the proceeds going to benefit a local organization or to keep the project, keep this program ongoing as long as possible and beyond exhausting the funds available through this fee. So some of the areas we wanted to focus, the rotating art piece or in the central courtyard in the corridors passing through on building one to both Coast Highway and Del Prado. And where you see the red dot closest to the post office there is a large wall which you all have probably seen driving down Del Prado, which, you know, is an opportunity for a public mural of some kind. This is just some imagery showcasing to a bit on the bottom left where we're headed with some branding on what will be Prado Square in a public courtyard in the middle of town, we're really hoping to activate that space ongoing periodically through events and just in general make that a real space where people can come and use and enjoy, which is where we want to showcase the public art. And I think you'll be seeing what we can do with other groups in town coming up on August twenty-second with Redo Market, would be our first real opportunity to engage our property with an event that's coming to downtown, so.
Oh, sorry, could you repeat that, I didn't catch that, what are you guys doing?
Oh, just, just the opportunity to start to engage that courtyard and Amber Lantern.
Right, but you mentioned an event on the.
Yeah, Redo Market, so Redo Market came to town, I think in nineteen was their last, and, well, first and most recent event. And for those of you who weren't able to go to that, it's a kind of a makers market, old school craft fair in town and it was phenomenal turnout, I think it was the most well-attended event in town center for people selling crafts. And it was a lot of fun and it's run by a gentleman, Randy Hill, who's excited to bring it back to downtown and we're supporting that event. And you'll see that in how we programmed Amber Lantern and the courtyard to really showcase what I think we can do for just engaging the public in this project. So the next image is a representation, not a direction, of where we can go with the mural, if that's something that the commission wants to see. We did engage through an RFP, an artist, Drew Merritt, who took a theme based on our representation that we'd really like to highlight, the fact that Dana Point is the first whale heritage site in the United States and I think that didn't get enough press personally. We are interested in doing something that engages with that theme, but it's not as sort of direct as a painting of a whale. This is an artist rendition of trying to communicate human connection with the water. So this is an image that caused some interesting reaction in our office. The bottom right image is actually, and it's tough to see from your vantage point, but it's a photorealistic squid octopus that was done on a huge building in LA that's extremely well-executed. And I think that what I'm wanting to get feedback on in this meeting, again, this is not what we're presenting as what we want to do, it's more an idea of what could be, something that's more artful, as I would characterize this representation, or something that's more direct, you know, showcasing very directly a whale image and focusing again on Dana Point being the first whale heritage site in the U.S. A few other images the artist provided relate to the lantern district and, you know, a rendition of a pair of binoculars looking out to the ocean and seeing the whales, and both of these could be, these images are really meant to just get a reaction from you as a commission and thinking about the scale of this wall in town center is something we wanted to be conscientious of in terms of drawing attention to this project and to this wall and seeing what your thoughts were on that. Again, the idea where we want to focus most of our attention and resource on is the rotating art piece, which would be housed at our project on a smaller scale in the public corridors and the public courtyard and rotated over time. And I have a video of a similar program that's ongoing in Carlsbad that I think is a phenomenal opportunity and we've contacted this artist who helped curate this program in Carlsbad, who's willing and able to help us do that here in Dana Point with local artists from Dana Point. So hopefully this works.
We couldn't pull it up, so if you have it on your.
Yeah, I do.
Thing, then maybe we could show the Commissioners if it ran from yours.
Let's see. Can you all see that?
You're back here.
I could probably pull up this website actually.
That's what we've.
Let me try to do that just before, so I'll do this as quickly as I can.
Let's see. Well, he's looking at that, does this one show it to you? It has not, they've been advised.
Oh, let me just see if I can.
Today. They are an advisory group to the Planning Commission, but ultimately Planning Commission will make the decision on any application, so we will keep them in the loop, but ultimately it'll be brought for this body for a decision.
I don't think it's.
So they were invited today?
They were, we told them that we were receiving this, yeah.
Let me just do this and see how loud we can make it here.
If you want to put it back here.
Yeah.
We can scan behind it.
Can you hear it? I think, I heard that.
Should be loud enough, let me just try to. Yeah, it's a little too clever here, I think it's in a window in this program, but I think you'll get the gist just by hearing it, so let me just try that in free benefit as well. And again, this is, this is just to showcase the rotating art piece, which I think is a great way to keep something that's ongoing at the project.
Till I talked to Brian, I didn't really know that there was actually a system of painting it every two months, but we're always fascinated to see what it is and just, it brings a village a little kind of homeier and different than the other villages up and down the coast.
It brings culture to the village that like, from other places too, like the artist right there, he's from Spain, so it's, it's not just like, you know, some kid who's coming around just spraying paint walls, it's, you know, it's legitimate stuff. You should have this happening all over the place, this should be, it should be a Carlsbad thing, we should have this on every wall.
Now, Juan Cazas almost every day, this type of thing is amazing, you can tell by the reactions, every other day you see people stop it, they want to see, they want to look, they want to take pictures, this to me is one of the focal points, one of the roots of this, you know, this tourism community.
We enjoy the art, but when we come into the village, we're probably going to spend money supporting other local businesses as well, so I think when you have things that add value to the community, add beauty to the community, but also generate revenue for other local businesses and taxes, like, we can't go wrong.
It definitely helps local businesses, because they come by and they look, they park their car, they go walk around the shops, they come and see your grubbies and have a margarita or some Mexican food, so it's got to help businesses.
It brings the village a little kind of homeier and people may come here just to see what the next mural is. I just think it just adds some work to the place, because every time we say we live in Carlsbad, people say, oh, that's such a neat little village in this apartment.
I love the Carlsbad art wall, I've been coming here since almost day one and looking at all the different artists that live here all the time, it's a great add to the community.
So I just wanted to show you that the rest is just promoting Carlsbad, so we don't need to watch that too much, but the opportunity, I believe, is to take something that is a finite amount of money and hopefully make it so it continues, but also to use it in ways that are not just a single sculpture or something that's just a point in time, so that is an opportunity, we wanted to get your feedback on a more static mural and specifically the scale of seeing something like that in downtown relative to a smaller but well-curated rotating art piece. And with whatever feedback we receive tonight, we'll take that and put together a formal application for the end of the month.
So let me, let me understand, you're talking about really two different concepts, one is a huge wall mural that would be static and remain?
Correct.
The second option is to, where you have the red dots, to put inside smaller pieces of art by local artists that could be viewed and sold and then that money would be able to generate additional art projects down.
Correct, or benefit a local organization, so that's, we're going to work through that in the application, but that is the opportunity, we could do a both frankly, a large-scale mural and then take whatever resource remains and apply that towards a rotating art piece. That mural is, and the quality of artists we'd want involved with that is going to take up a big chunk of that fee that's available, so, you know, part of this I think is getting a reaction from something of that scale in downtown on the giant wall mural. The other piece is considering this rotating art, is that, does that comply with the intent and purpose of this Art in Public Places fee?
How would the artists be compensated? If you sell that and support a local charitable organization?
Sure. The details of that we'd have to work through and present in our application, but the canvas that you saw in Carlsbad and working with that particular artist who's a curator of this kind of work, who's able to curate this for us in our project in Dana Point, each one of those murals runs about five thousand to support a local artist, which includes a nominal fee to the artist and then the supplies necessary to perform that art. They've done some larger and more costly art pieces where the artist is compensated more, it really depends on the artist and what you can coordinate, but the idea is to work with local artists and provide something that's high quality at a low enough cost where we can keep it ongoing for, you know, a period of time which would be in excess of a few years, hopefully longer, with rotating pieces every quarter, every, twice two rotations a year. So the details of that are forthcoming, the idea tonight is just to get your reaction to a large-scale mural, number one, and then number two, the idea of using this fee as a, to support a rotating component.
Great, I have a couple of questions for you, thanks for coming in too, and I think you guys were the first to do a mural in Dana Point on the side of.
We did, on our office building.
Building which I thought really made a really nice, it was a nice addition, subtle, but well-positioned and my position on murals is I think they're absolutely, you know, a wonderful thing and the bigger the better. And I also recognize that you're going to likely receive, you're either have people that really love them or people that hate it, and I think the art itself is where the biggest challenge is. For me, art is objective and I think whatever the owner of the wall wants to put up is what they should put up, we shouldn't be telling them what is good and what's bad from an art perspective, because art is in the eye of the beholder, right? So, you know, as it relates to the wall, I don't have any concerns with a mural and think it's a great idea, and I also like the idea that you've talked about, and I, you sort of look at it from going back and looking at our ordinance, I don't think the goal ever was to commercialize art, but what these ordinances effectively do is they create that commercialization of art in such a way that it makes it really hard for the local guys to show up and do anything, you know, the mural's a great example, and to be able to pull that off, you got to have some substantial resources, which means it's going to cost whoever's putting it up, the developer, a substantial amount of money. So when you talk about rotating art, is it, are, is it various types of art, is it, can you be more, is there a limit on that?
Yeah, so the, we've discussed graphic art, so it would be, and we're working on the system, but a fixed panel, at least four, that are fixed to the building and the public court, the courtyard and the corridors, where the art could be submitted, each piece of art is framed and mounted in the same way, so that it's secured, it's open to the public, and then after a certain period of time we could take that down, there would be an auction of some kind, the details of which are forthcoming, and then we would rotate that with a new piece. But the idea is that it would be affixed in the same way. We could add a sculptural component as well, if that was something that, that was discussed as something we could coordinate as well. The third piece, which I think is kind of interesting and could also be a part of this, would be musical art and having performance art be a component of a rotation where, I know we've talked with Music Preserves, which is a local foundation run by Anthony Small, who's very interested in trying to introduce a musical performance component to the rotating art piece, so, you know, that is something we may present in the application so long as the commission was open to the idea of a rotating art element.
Okay, that's helpful, so then, the other question I think, I guess we maybe staffed away on this, is we look at the two hundred, let's call it two hundred and fifty thousand is the investment in public art, obviously, or to me it would be obvious that some of the investment would be creating the space for the art, right, so if you were going to provide an area for a sculpture, there would be a base that sculpture may have to sit on, so there's, there's all these physical proponents that aren't actually art, but they cost money to create the art, and how do you, you know, how do you bifurcate that and how does the city? that, and how does the city look at that? You know, is it a one-time investment, that's all they care, or, you know, is there, the part of the investment goes into hard fixed assets that they, that doesn't, that never leave, other than, you know, normal maintenance, and then there's money that's set aside for artists, or is it just one big investment, and then as long as you can continue to roll that art, you know, can't leave until you have a replacement piece? How would you guys look at that, I guess?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I know Jason has had discussions with Brenda, this is, this approach we have not seen before, honestly, and understanding your comment and going through what we went through at South Cove, you know, with the, the Linear Park, which was part of their art in public places, went towards those contributions there, and I know there was substantial, you know, costs associated with the base of the whole B memorial and some of the other ones, so, we'd have to factor that in, and I guess we'd have to understand the details in this rotating, and I guess that would be the question that we would have, is from a value standpoint, how are we tracking that as we rotate through? And just understanding that, I don't, if you presented that, presented that to Brenda, I haven't seen it yet, so I think that's kind of...
No, no, we haven't, I mean, the idea would be to keep this ongoing as long as we can and produce, to produce as much art as possible in the lowest-cost form as possible, which to me is working with high-quality local artists who can produce something that's everyone wants to see, and doing that in a way where we extend out a quarter million dollars or more for as long as possible. I think you could spend that money very quickly producing the code-compliant base and a sculpture element that eats that entire fee in a very small piece of art, so our idea and objective is to expand the scale of it by most likely even a painted art, because that's the most cost-effective, you know, as compared to a sculpture, which I know the city's had experience with, and it's...
Yeah, pricing.
We looked at sculpture elements early on in our project design, and, and while they're beautiful, I think it's, I think you get more bang for your buck, so to speak, in, in a painted art, so.
You know, what I was just thinking is that if your art is inside the public square, if you provide the space and, and it's something different, you're going to drive traffic to the project, so, so there's a kind of a, a, an integration of being able to change the art and to provide a, a format for local artists to show what they, they have, and at the same time, give them the space is a cost, in other words, but it's also a benefit to drive traffic, because if you put up one sculpture and everybody looks at it and says, "Very nice, that's it," if it's changing, then have you seen this, you gotta go down and take a look at this, it's really interesting. So, to me, I, I like the idea personally of having something that's change, changes, at the same time, I think, trying to figure out what the, what the cost element is versus the requirement, that's something that has to be balanced, but performance art would certainly create traffic, so, you know, you're going to be, you know, a focal point for downtown, and it's a matter of how do you drive traffic besides your retail establishments, but having an element of, of art, I, I think, would certainly contribute to that.
Sure, I completely agree, and I think the idea is driving traffic not just to our project, but to the businesses in our center and downtown in general. And the one ideal we've contemplated is if the art is, if there are panels, the medium we're, we're still discussing, but if it's a panel that the artist applies paint or some other media to, and then that's affixed in our project, the actual, the placement of that art on this panel could be done in a, in a way that's open to the public and visible, and over the course of several days, at the project, right in the public square that people could watch. So there's an element of, of engaging in the visibility of the actual installation of the art that, that could be involved as well, so I think this could be a pretty cool program, but it is a bit of a twist on, I think, the, the, how the fee's applied, and that's really what we're trying to get feedback on, is we formalize the program to present to y'all.
Commissioner Gabbard?
Yeah, no, I think you're, you're definitely on the right track. I would say that the murals, the murals can be great, I, I'm a big fan of just interpretive art, so just let the, let the artist go wild, and I'm sure it'll turn out great. As far as the reoccurring art goes, I, I agree with both, both commissioners that it's really important that we're taking this opportunity, this art opportunity, to drive traffic for businesses in the area, so a variety of art is going to be, that, that is constantly turning over is going to be a huge benefit to the, to the town center, so just figure out the numbers piece of it, think that that's where the really the rub is, is how do you, you know, assign a value to art that's reoccurring, and, and where do those fees go once, once the art turns over? All of those kind of details are where the, where the rubber meets the road, but as far as concepts go, I think you guys are doing a great job.
Okay.
So, I concur with everybody else on the idea of the rotating art, do you think that's a great idea? I really love the concept of the mural on Del Prado, the only thing that I see there is, the example that you gave us for Carlsbad was kind of like the whole side of the building, where you have that horrible wall of the post office, so how do I stand in front of that and take a picture, you know, in front of it when I have that wall, so just trying to figure out how to mitigate it around that to make it, people want to go there, because right now with that wall there, it's really, you just have that little couple feet piece where it actually comes down to sidewalk level, so it's like, how do I, how do I make it work and invite the public to see it? I mean, I'll drive down Del Prado more often to see what's there, but it's trying to get people there to look at it is also the other piece of it.
That's great feedback, if I may respond, that, what I failed to mention is that the mural in another avenue we're exploring for a large fixed mural inside the building is an augmented reality component to it, where if you held up your phone to it at a distance, the mural would actually come alive, so to speak, so there's a, and that's a younger element that we think would be pretty cool to attract.
Lots of skateboarders that are down the street a little bit further.
We, we've had to install some beautiful Starkish curb stops on our building as a result, but, you know, I think engaging youth is something we're also very interested in doing, and just that attitude and energy downtown is important, I think for just having a balanced town center. But the, the aspect of that wall, yes, it's ugly, I think the scale of that mural at elevation, as you're driving north on Del Prado, if you take a look at that wall, I mean, it's visible your entire length from, you know, basically Golden Lantern up to, to Amber, you can see, well, I guess be Violet, you can see that wall very, very strongly, so I think that's where artists do their thing, and, and I understand what you're saying, I think the ability for an artist to really showcase something at a higher elevation and still see it as you're on the sidewalk is, is there.
Right.
In fact, I'd pull up those images again, the vantage point is from, you know, up the street in the middle of...
Right, yeah, it's just that little bit of wall, just a tractor, that's all.
Sure, yeah, yeah, no, I get it, I get it.
You know, what, I was also thinking, when you were talking about providing artists, you know, panels or something, I thought, well, having painted art and sculptures and say, well, if, if you showed that and said, "It's, it's for sale," the artist will get something, and then something goes back to the next, the next person, the next, whatever, whatever we're trying to contribute to in the, in the area, homelessness or, or something, so there's some, some benefit that goes to that, and so that you, you're not just saying it's going to be paintings, everything's going to be, here's, here's the format, here's the painting, so I think you're, you're going to get more interest by having diversity of, of what art is shown, and also if somebody looks at it and says, "Hey, it's for sale," you know, you can, you can buy this, and the artist gets benefit, and the community gets a benefit, so, and that would make it last longer, because a lot of local artists want to have a place to, to show what they've done, so.
Well, and I think there's a lot of opportunity around that theme, as an example, on the Carlsbad art wall, there was a, a local teenager who passed away, and his family wanted to do something to memorialize their son, and this artist, the, the artist we talked to about coordinating all this work, basically found another artist to come in and do essentially a paint-by-number, where it was a outlined painting where the whole community came, and each got a color to paint a section of this mural, and it all came together, it was incredible, but it just, the whole community was there, myself included, and just engaging in painting that mural, which, that's where the opportunity is in a program like this, so I'm, I'm glad to hear some receptivity for this.
Yeah, any, anytime you can get people interacting with art, the better off you're going to be, it'll just trouble our traffic.
Agreed.
Let me offer you one, couple of the things before we close this, but I appreciate you coming out, really interesting concept, I'm going to encourage you to keep going down this road of creativity, I'm going to, you know, when I look at our ordinance, it talks about it, very specifically, and I'm, I'm going to, I want to put this out there, because I think it's important for us to think through this, but it says that public art shall include but not be limited to, I mean, then it lists off a whole host of different types of, of media, but then there's one section here that I think is even more important to talk about, and that is... Oh man, I had it in here and then I lost it, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, here it is, right, so the purpose is to enhance the culture and aesthetic environment of the city of Dana Point, and to encourage creativity, education, and an appreciation of the arts and our culture, and I think the word creativity in there in our own ordinance speaks to the process, in that, you know, we have an ordinance that's encouraging creativity, then you should be released to go do that, as long as it makes, you know, reasonable sense that, that it works out in the end, and the city's not left holding the bag, and there's, you know, not empty frames, and, you know, something five years from now that we look back, and we, we really missed the ball in that one.
Sure.
But I'd love to look back and go, wow, that, that creativity, that range rebought of this, you know, it's a new way to do art of the places where it's real art and not commercialized art, not that that's not art, but I don't think the intent of our ordinance was to, you know, do a one-off art piece for one person who gets, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then locks off with, with, you know, a check, and we're stuck with art for the rest of eternity, because now you can't change it. I love the idea of, you know, of rolling art and, you know, ever change it, I think one is, and a really great example is the Sculpture Garden in Newport Beach at the library, or at City Hall, I don't know how they do that, I'm guessing it's not cheap, but it's a really great thing to see, and I work over there, and every once in a while, you come, you know, go to the office, and there's new art to see, and, and it's, it's very welcoming, and it makes the mundane, you know, unmundane, so I would encourage you to keep going. I think that was it, so, yeah, that was, those were my comments, and again, I appreciate you coming out and sharing with us.
Yeah, of course, I think, we just wanted to get feedback before we presented something that, you know, was like a lead balloon, so, any feedback from anyone else here on this?
No, I'm just desiring to be observing.
Okay.
Great, well, maybe you paint too.
All right.
Thank you very much for your feedback.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is there anything, anything else?
Uh, anything else, staff?
No, not with this done.
All right, thanks for...
Thank you, all right, with that, we are going to move on to staff reports, do you have any staff reports that I...
Not today.
All right, no staff reports, Commissioner Gabbard?
Come on.
Okay.
No.
Vice chair.
I went down to the harbor and the cafe at the, at Doheny is excellent, outdoor, really nice, and I hope that we continue to have that instead of snack bar, because it's really good to start.
Thank you, vice chair, and then on, on a sad note, I think it's important to mention, you know, Danny Murphy, Commissioner Murphy resigned this week, unfortunately, she will certainly be missed, I've spent, you know, the, the whole time on the commission with her, and I'm sad to see her go and, and hope to see her very soon, but, you know, appreciate all the effort that she put in over the years and the contributions that she's made to the city, and that does not go unnoticed by most people, so, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next scheduled meeting on September thirteenth, twenty-one.
September.